Evening, everyone. It is September 11th, 2012. It is the meeting of the work session of the North Kingstown School Committee. Would everyone please rise for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Lorraine, if you could call the roll, please. Linda Avanzato.
Here.
Melvoid Benson.
Here.
John Biscardin.
Here.
Larry Cerisi.
Here.
William Mudge. Kimberly Page.
Here.
Richard Welsh.
Here.
Julia Held.
Here.
Thank you. I'll note for the record that Mr. Mudge is not here tonight because of the death of his mother. Thank you, everyone, for signing the card for Mr. Mudge. Mrs. Benson.
Thank you for those kind words, and I would like to ask that the members in the audience, as well as the committee, stand for a moment of silence for the Mudge family.
Why don't we do that along with, as a remembrance for 9/11 also, too?
Yes. Thank you.
Lorraine, if you could please go over the calendars. September 19th, Wellness Committee meeting, 3:30 p.m., Stony Lane School. September 25th, School Committee Business Meeting, 7:00 p.m., North Kingstown High School Auditorium. September 26th, No School for Students, beyond Capur. October 2nd, Policy Subcommittee Meeting, 9:00 a.m., Central Administration Building. Thank you. Thank you. Dr. O'Jay, Superintendent's Report.
Sure. I have a few things tonight. First, I want to say if anybody happens to be here to discuss busing to the Yorktown neighborhood, I got a few emails about that. We were able to find a solution to that, and it looks like busing will be restored to that neighborhood in the next few days. So I just didn't want someone to be waiting around to comment on that. We have something to that end on the agenda later on tonight, but I just want people to know that. So things are looking good in that regard, and I know Mr. Horan is doing his best to get the word out to that community and to all the affected students ASAP. Second item I'd like to comment on is pleased I was the other day to have, you know, the pleasure of going and awarding our Teacher of the Year to Ms. Toni Annette Silveira. Toni Silveira, as everyone, I believe in this room, probably knows, is our bandleader and music teacher at the high school, and she has been there for 17 years. She has had enormous success with our students. We regularly are tops in the state in terms of the number of all-state students in the band. She conducts the all-state jazz program herself and has led the NKHS and Jazz Bands to sweep the New York City Heritage Music Festival last year, winning six awards. That's a national competition. And... Can we have... Can we stop the flashing, please?
Yeah, if you could take...
It's disruptive.
If you could take a picture without the flash.
Appreciate it. And this year, her students, you know, a huge thrill for them and a big boost for North Kingstown. Four of our students actually participated on the main stage of the Newport Jazz Festival, and that's due to her hard work. She is a tremendous person, a team player, and unanimous choice of the selection committee for this, and so, you know, congratulations to Toni Silveira. Also, congratulations to Elizabeth Tully, who won our ESP of the Year. Ms. Tully is at Quiddnessett Elementary School. There is nothing for Quiddnessett Elementary School that Ms. Tully will not do. She comes early, she stays late, and even when she's home, she's focusing on the kids at Quiddnessett Elementary School, helping with school plays, helping with everything. She does a great deal, in fact, in making every costume for those plays. And if you haven't seen those plays, they are huge elaborate productions involving sometimes up to like 75 students, all of whom are wearing a beautiful costume made by Liz Tully. And that's just one of the many things that she does for that school and for this district. She also does a lot to train other clerks in this district. So she and Ms. Silveira are exemplary of, you know, the great staff that we have in this district, and, you know, congratulations to both of them. The third thing I'd like to point out tonight, a bit of good news that came in this, in the recent edition of Rhode Island Monthly. I don't know if any of you have seen this. I'm going to put something on the webpage about this later this week. But Rhode Island Monthly every year puts out what they call the top high schools. They rank the 40 public high schools in Rhode Island. And North Kingstown generally does well in their rankings, and this year was no different. We were fourth out of 40 in their rankings, and that's wonderful news. Now, you know, we get a lot of different rankings for our schools. Recently, the state of Rhode Island, through the kneecap rankings listed North Kingstown High School, is kind of on the higher end of a typical high school. So you can say, well, how are we ranked fourth in the state, but we're listed as typical at the same time? Well, the rankings are a lot of different things that come into play. And in this case, you know, it gives a lot of valuable information. If you do not have this, it will be posted on our webpage tomorrow, so you can kind of look at what they use for their factor in, you know, the rankings. It ranges everything from the number of students we have taking AP classes to how our kids do on SAT scores. The kneecap is included. Our graduation rate is included. And interestingly, our per pupil spending is included. And North Kingstown is on the low end in the state, is on the lower half of per pupil spending, and still gets ranked amongst some of the highest schools in the state. So, you know, that's something that is a very good sign for North Kingstown, I believe. So I wanted to point that out. The other thing I'd like to do is I'd like to read a response to something that came to light in the last few meetings, particularly in comments made about administrative salaries here in North Kingstown. "I feel it's important to correct the misinformation coming from NEA about administrative salaries. An ESP member recently reported at a school committee meeting that our principals have received a 3% increase this past year. As the committee knows, the principals who were up for a contract renewal had their pay frozen. In fact, over the past four years, of the 12 principals and assistant principals, nine had their pay frozen at least twice, and the newest principals had it frozen once. In the years that it wasn't frozen, they received a 1% increase. Our administrators do have a clause in their contract to receive merit pay. The merit pay format provides a reason to keep baseline salary low and includes some of one's pays... includes some of one's pay only if one's performance is determined by the evaluator to be worthy. And it has been used by our committees as rationale to essentially freeze principal salaries. For the record, my merit pay in 2011-12 was 1% of my salary, $1,380. My entire salary, merit pay included, is less than the salary for other new superintendents in the area. You can look at East Greenwich or South Kingstown, who recently had new rookie superintendents like myself, even those in their smaller districts. That is fair market value, and it is the principle guiding the school committee's approach in our ESP negotiations. I read on the NEA propaganda website, a link called Roundhouse Left, that I got $3,800 increase in salary last year, $2,000 was merit pay, and the other $1,800 was, quote, 'something else.' I even saw a comment on the patch that I am now up to a 5% increase. It's interesting how rumors just get a life of their own." Obviously, these statements are false. It seems to me that if NEARI wants to be taken seriously, they need to start with acknowledging the truth. If you disagree, that's fine, but at least we need to be honest. Also, for the record, if our ESP membership is willing to accept such a merit pay arrangement where your immediate supervisor has full discretion to link some of your pay to the quality of your work, I would be happy to incorporate such a plan. And that is what I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. O'Jay. Mrs. Benson.
I just wanted to speak about what you had on the desk, Superintendent O'Jay, about the scores.
Yes.
When I received Rhode Island Monthly, I was very pleased. I called, but you were busy to tell your congratulations at the end of... this is September, but it came out at the end of August. And I noticed that the fact that we are always in here comparing ourselves with East Greenwich. And I didn't make that comparison, but I did after studying and reading Rhode Island Monthly, the content of the whole article. I came to the conclusion that North Kingstown did belong in the fourth place. And being an educator, I think we reached this fourth place by doing the reading and the math, because it's a long fact that a kid can't understand science unless he can read and think. And that was one compliment I wanted to give because reading...
Yes, Mrs. Benson.
I was waiting because I thought what I would say would be interesting to the whole committee, and I was giving them...
Then a lecture.
Say what?
Once again, a lecture. Why don't you just go on?
Yes, Mrs. Benson, would you like to say?
Thank you, Mr. Wood. I think you need a lecture. And what I was going to say is, it shows great progress. I'm sure you and I are thinking on the same thing, because reading and math is the tool to science, and we exceeded in reading and writing, and that's the key to it. And even though I won't be here next year, I will be watching very closely to see how this reading and writing plays into coming up with the science score, because you really have to learn to think. There was a teacher at Hamilton, some of you who went to Hamilton, Wright McKnight, remember her, Mrs. Ruth Haller and Georgia Kepplin. I'm sure you have gone and seen some of their work that the State Department of Education has congratulated them on and has reached back to bring and cooperate some of those educational standards into what they have, the race to the top. And Ruth Haller was a person, every morning, her fourth-grade class would write up their activities for what they did yesterday. And you can imagine some of the things, I have them in old scrapbooks, some of the things that they would write. Oh, I didn't do nothing yesterday. She would bring out it to them. You did something when you got home. And that writing led to the reading and science during those periods.
Thank you, Mrs.
So I think that we're on the right track with that, and I think this is a meeting to discuss education of the student and education the way we're doing it. And so I tied those two things in with experience, and it is due to be congratulated, because no sly can run without a head reindeer. That's why we refer to Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer.
Thank you, Mrs. Benson.
That's what I wanted to say.
All right.
Thank you, Mrs. Page, for allowing me to say this.
All right. That brings us into routine items and into the first one being the executive session. Do we have a motion to seal the executive minutes?
Move second.
You have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Mrs. Burgland, could you disclose the executive session votes?
We have a vote disclosed from last executive session. The following was a vote regarding litigation taken at the executive session of August 28th, 2012. All members were present at the executive session of August 28th. Motion was made by Larry Cerisi to accept the first option to continue to pursue litigation, including but not limited to a temporary and/or permanent injunction and punitive damages. It was seconded by Dick Welsh. Vote was the motion passed five to one, with Melvoid Benson opposed. Bill Mudge was not present for the vote. At tonight's executive session, all members were present except Bill Mudge and Melvoid Benson. Motion was made by Larry Cerisi to table this and all future grievances from this bargaining unit until the contract is resolved, seconded by Linda Avanzato. Vote was the motion passed five to zero. Motion was made by Linda Avanzato to adjourn executive session and go into open, seconded by John Biscardin. The vote was the motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to consent agenda. Is there anything that people would like to exempt? Mrs. Benson.
I just wanted to ask our attorney, along with the arbitrator's rulings, is it legal for us not to do that until the contract is signed?
Mrs. Benson, we can't talk about what we discussed in executive session right here. We've just sealed those motions.
To discuss it, I was going by the vote.
If you would like to discuss that with Mrs. Carroll at a break, you may do that.
Well, I won't discuss it whether with a break. I think the public should know, so we'll leave here with correct information tonight.
Our attorney was present at the executive session, so I'm sure she'd give us good legal advice.
That's an illegal question, Mrs. Page, and the question is, can you legally withstand everything until the contract is saved?
Cerisi.
Point of order.
What is your point of order?
What is your point of order? Thank you, Madam Chair. These questions, as you know, are supposed to go through the chair of the committee, and I believe you've already answered the question for Mrs. Benson. This question was asked of our legal counsel in executive session tonight and was answered by our legal counsel in executive session tonight. And I'm sorry that Mrs. Benson couldn't attend, but had she been in attendance at executive session, she would have had this information available to her. And as you stated, she could certainly ask this question of legal counsel during a break or after tonight's meeting. So I believe you've already ruled on this, and I'm asking that we continue forward with the agenda.
All right. So we're at consent...
I didn't appear in the executive session because I...
All right. Let's move on here to the consent agenda. I'm going to ask that the committee...
Five to six. So I will ask her...
Committee, move on to consent agenda, and I'm taking exemptions to the consent agenda. Mr. Biscardin.
I'd like to exempt under E personnel, personnel items, six through 10.
I second that.
We don't really need a second on that, but...
Okay, to make the records clear.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the remainder of the consent items? Mr. Cerisi.
I don't have any consent agenda items that I'm looking to exempt. However, before we vote on the consent agenda, I'd like to give... I'd like to welcome, actually, two new members of the school district's team and congratulate them, and I think it'd be... I think it'd be a good idea to give the superintendent an opportunity to welcome them as well.
Thank you. There are a couple of people on this consent agenda tonight that I do want to acknowledge. First, on item E1 is the approval for the appointment of our plants and grounds supervisor, Steve Tremblay. I know that we had a very good team who looked into this search led by Mary King. I'm going to let her speak in a moment. I interviewed Mr. Tremblay myself, had a long conversation with him. I think he is a tremendous person and certainly very well-qualified to do this work, as he had done the work for several years for the Providence School District. So in my opinion, if he can handle something that large, he can certainly work with us in North Kingstown, and he certainly knows, you know, the educational side to buildings and grounds, which was very impressive to me. Knows how to work with RIDE, knows what an RFP is all about, knows what a bond is all about, and certainly has a very good vision about how to save money through maintaining buildings well, and we desperately need that right now. Mary, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, just that the search committee was comprised of Mr. Grundy, who is the chair of our facilities subcommittee, Mr. Welsh, myself, and members of the school department staff, which would be Ev Quinn, who's our clerk in maintenance, Dave Young, who's a foreman, and Debbie Gardner, who's our HR person. And Steve was in the Providence school system, as noted, and he really did stand out amongst the candidates that we did interview and that we brought back to meet with Dr. O'Jay. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize the maintenance staff of the North Kingstown School Department for their hard work over this past year in really maintaining the facilities and doing what they needed to have done without this, you know, everyday leadership. They did a great job getting school up and running for this season, and they've done so under a lot of pressure. I also want to specifically recognize Ev Quinn, who's the clerk in our plants and grounds department, because she, too, has done a lot of extraordinary work, doing a lot of paperwork and a lot of things that she wasn't always able to do before. And especially, I'd like to recognize Dave Young, who's been a very big assistant to Dr. O'Jay and myself with regards to the plants and grounds, and they've all done a great job.
Mr. Cerisi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to continue, thank you to Dr. O'Jay and Mrs. King. And again, congratulations to those two individuals and welcome. And at this time, I'll make a motion...
I have one more, actually.
Sure, go ahead.
I also want to draw attention to what I hope will be our new assistant principal for teaching and learning at the high school, Dr. Denise Mansieri, who is here this evening. Dr. Mansieri has been in the district 15 years? I'm taking away your thunder. I'm sorry about that. I'm going to let her do that. I'm sorry. But I've been also involved in this interview process as well, everyone, and I would like to say how impressed I am and how convinced I am that this is the right move for the high school at this point. And without any further ado, I'm going to let Dr. Michelle Humbert do the rest of the work.
We're happy to bring Dr. Mansieri's name before you this evening. She has a long career in education, in careers, actually, and has been teaching in North Kingstown since 2002, has served in many leadership capacities during that time, has chaired and co-chaired many committees, and has certainly just taken a leadership role. So we're very pleased, and the committee really wanted to acknowledge and did acknowledge the fact that Dr. Mansieri, one of her greatest strengths is her ability to collaborate with her colleagues and to always be involved in positive interactions. So we know this will serve us all well, and we welcome her aboard, hopefully, this evening.
I apologize. I jumped the gun there a little bit. Congratulations and welcome. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we need a vote.
At this time, I'd make a motion to approve the non-exempt consent agenda item.
Aye to second.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor in a second. Lorraine, could you take a roll call vote? Melvoid Benson.
Yes.
John Biscardin.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Richard Welsh.
Yes.
Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. All right. Yes, Mrs. Benson.
If the new high users in the audience could they stand please, most especially the supervisor, plants and grounds.
We still have... Actually, Mr. Biscardin has exempted number seven, so we need to talk through the exempts. Actually, why don't we skip to...
Six is one.
And six. Yeah, yeah, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. So, Mr. Biscardin, why don't you go with, start with six?
Well, I'd expect that to be introduced after he finishes his...
No, we have not approved the item yet, so that's why I'm saying not yet.
Okay.
It was just a very simple question, and I thought, Dr., we eliminated E portfolio when one of it was on the budget cuts.
I thought that was a... We eliminated the electronic portfolio portion, that piece of it. We did not eliminate the coordinator.
Well, if we don't...
Coordinator... Tom, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
If we don't have the software, why do we need a coordinator?
Come on.
You still have the requirement to do it. It's just a different means of keeping the...
And it's kind of a phase-out over a few years because certain kids are already in it?
Sure. It's a phase-out, not a total elimination, because we do have to have two proficiency-based graduation requirements in place. So what we're doing is, starting with the incoming freshman class, we are putting another proficiency-based graduation requirement in place for them. So if that class moves up and the future classes behind them, E portfolio will phase out. But what it means is that for the current sophomore class, juniors, and then seniors, most of them should have completed E portfolio. We're letting them finish up E portfolio because that's the system that they came in under.
I see.
So I believe Mrs. Huggins' position, as reflected, does reflect the reduction, which will continue to reduce for the next couple of years.
Okay.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve E6?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven, Mr. Biscardin, you exempted this one?
Yeah. I just... I know we... Doctor, you had explained this to me in another instance, but I would like if you could do that again, that there's... Ms. Mansieri is... She was a teacher, and now she's an administrator, but yet we're giving her a leave of absence from the teaching position.
This is something that some of our principals, including Mr. Ferrario, for instance, have requested, and the committee has granted. And that is basically that a teacher from our district moving to an administrative level, particularly with a one-year contract to begin, would feel like, you know what, they'd like to know that their teaching job is secure if this doesn't work out. And sometimes they even request to renew that for more than one year, and it's the committee's will in terms of if that's granted or not. But that is something that we have done in the past as a favor to the candidates who have moved up to the administrative ranks.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve...
Seven and eight.
Seven and eight.
So move.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, seven and eight pass. Now, Mrs. Dr. Mansieri.
I'm sorry.
Steve Tremblay here?
No, he could not make it tonight. Okay.
Steve's not here. I'm assuming she's in the office? She's in the audience?
Dr. Mansieri is here. Mr. Tremblay is not.
Does she stand up? Recognize yourself. All right.
Hey, one more time.
All right. Mr. Biscardin, you also exempted nine and 10.
Are these positions going to be backfilled, or are we eliminating them altogether, Doctor?
Oh...
That is being filled.
These would all be filled. These are not... These are not reductions. They're resignations.
So these are right, but you're going to find replacements? You're not going to try to... Like, for example, the media specialist?
Well, the media specialist, you know, my sense of this is that I believe this came about because originally we had reduced in library media. So there's already been a reduction there. And I know in the second instance, a person took, you know, this is someone that we had in our ranks as a science teacher who took a full-time position somewhere else. I don't know if you can speak to the third one or not, but, you know, in all cases, these are jobs that we need and are budgeted for. They're just people who have resigned their positions, and we will need to fill them.
There's not a... There's not a, Ms. King, are we gonna look at the opportunity to possibly cover this with existing folks, or that's not an option?
I don't believe that's an option for number 10. I know that there's currently a sub in that position.
And number nine?
I don't believe that's an option--
A or B?
No, because those were positions that did not come back at the beginning of the year.
Thank you.
Mrs. Avanzado, and then Mrs. Benson.
I would just note that we did make a reduction in the library, and I believe we didn't, we did not reverse that reduction.
Actually, in both areas, we made reductions in teaching sections at the high school in the last budget, and we made reductions in library district-wide, and .5 at the high school. So, you know--
Reductions in library.
So these are--
My questions were not saying that we did not make reductions. I just saw, whenever I see a resignation, I always look at it as an opportunity to try to fill with existing staff before we bring on a new hire. And that was only my question. I was not questioning the fact that, Mrs. Avanzado, that we did not make reductions. I know we made, I lobbied to not make the reductions in the library, if you recall.
Oh, I do. I just wanted to note that, and it wasn't in opposition to what you said, it was just in addition.
Mrs. Benson.
Speaking about the library, you mentioned about the portfolio, Dr. Roget, and research is a very integral part of the portfolio, and we hired a person to go to work with the children in the portfolio. Will she be available for them for research? This is strictly educational, but you see the kids need, will she be available?
The, to my knowledge, the portfolio coordinators do help students with research, yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve number nine and number 10?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to the end of the consent agenda, and we are now into unfinished business. Mr. Welch.
I'm sorry.
You are the item A of unfinished business.
Let me get to that. I'm sorry.
I just have a procedural question, Ms. Page.
Yes.
How is A and B unfinished and not new? I mean, it's--
Good question.
Because it is, it is new for this agenda, but because it's within the time period of the two years that usually someone serves as the Chair or the Vice Chair, it is unfinished.
I see.
Well, I forwarded a letter to the Chair that, for some reasons, I am looking to step down as Vice Chair, and that's effective tonight.
All right. That is, if you haven't seen it in your correspondence, it should be the last item under your correspondence. Mrs. Avanzado.
Yes, I just want to thank Mr. Welch, and I want to point out what a difficult job it is, and as well, I want to thank you too, Mrs. Page, because it's not an easy thing to be the Chair or the Vice Chair of the committee. And I know Mr. Welch puts in untold hours at the Facility Subcommittee meetings, at the agenda meetings, and in, just in general, works very hard, as well as you do. And it's, as I said, it's not an easy job. A lot of times, you're not the most popular person in town, but, you know, it's basically public service. You don't get paid very much to do this job. It's not a fun job, but I really want to thank you. I really appreciate both of you and the efforts that you put in. And at this time, I'd like to offer a motion to nominate Larry Cerisi for Vice Chair.
I'll second that motion.
We would have to vote on his because the Chair isn't vacant yet.
We need to accept the resignation first.
Am I correct?
We need a motion first to accept the resignation.
Uh-huh. Yes. I make a motion that we accept Mr. Welch's resignation--
I reluctantly second it.
--that we--
I'll second that motion.
And that we would offer our thanks to him for the public servant he's done. And as Mrs. Avanzado said, when you sign up for, you know, the cook stove gets hot, so you just have to get you a towel and absorb the sweat. So, Mr. Welch, I wish you very good luck in what you're doing.
Second.
Immediately after we take a motion on his resignation, I would like to make a motion--
One more. You got to vote on the one motion first.
We have--
That's what I said. Immediately, I'd like to be recognized.
We have a motion on the table.
I will say personally, I appreciate all the, I felt like this was a cooperative partnership, Dick. I'll call you Dick instead of Mr. Welch. But I do appreciate all the help that you've given me as Vice Chair, and I know you're gonna be around, it's just you won't be, it's, you're not going anywhere in terms of the table here for a couple of months, so. So it's not like we're gonna have to worry about not having you here for, at least until December.
Right. I'm not leaving the committee just stepping down from the Vice Chair, and I appreciate everything that folks have said. I've always tried to make my decisions in favor of the students and the town of North Kingstown. So I thank you very much. It's been my pleasure to serve with you folks, and, well, after November, we'll see what happens.
You know, thank you.
All right. We have a motion on the floor in a second. All those--
I second.
Yes, you made the motion. So we have a motion on the floor in a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Mr. Welch, we have, we have accepted your resignation, Mrs. Avanzado, since you have already started to put a motion on the floor.
Yes, thank you very much. I would offer a motion, please, to nominate Mr. Cerisi for Vice Chair.
Second.
All right. There is a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right. Lorraine, if you could take a roll call vote. Larry Cerisi.
Yes, yes.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Richard Welch.
Yes.
Linda Avanzado.
Yes.
Melvoid Benson.
No.
John Biscardin.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes five to one.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Benson.
Thank you. I have a letter here from Mr. Mudge, and he would like to be recorded as no.
Well, I can't record a vote if someone is not here. We--
I think the state law is you can either vote by electronics or you can send something in, you know, and--
I'm gonna turn to--
You can't, in order to vote on a motion on the table, you can't send something in in writing. It's not, that it's not according to state law.
Okay. I'll turn this over to you, and you may address it in sending Mr. Mudge a letter. I won't try to express your words.
All right. That takes us into the action regarding the Level III grievance--
He said you may reach him at 787.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Benson. I'm moving on.
Move on?
You would like to pass the letter down, that would be good, so we can have it for Lorraine to put it in our records.
Mrs. Page, Article, number three was tabled due to the fact--
That's right, I was just gonna ask you. Okay. All right. Item 4D. Mary Ann.
Actually, 4D--
Okay.
4D, we really should have handled before we did nine.
And this is an employee who had asked for a leave of absence to take a job in another district, and the superintendent denied the leave of absence, so now she's asking for the committee to act on that particular motion.
Mrs. Avanzado.
Yes, I would just go back to something that's been a practice with this committee, and we really need to put into policy, and that's something Mr. Cerisi's been saying for a couple of years in terms of leaves of absence, so that we are being equitable in the way we handle them and make sure we handle them all the same. We have been handling them all the same way in the last few years, actually. And while we do sometimes consider leaves of absence for employees staying within the district, leaving one position, going to another in case something happens with that move or with that transition, we do not generally leave a job open for someone who leaves our employ and goes somewhere else. And so I will be voting no on this item for that reason. I don't think we should be doing that.
I agree, Mrs. Avanzado, to have, for anybody to ask a former employer to keep a spot warm for them in case this other new job doesn't work out, I think is just absurd. I think North Kingstown School should be a safety net for anybody. Crazy.
I don't have a motion. Is there somebody making a motion?
Second.
So I have a motion on the floor, and I will call on you, Mrs. Benson, so I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Cerisi and a second by Mr. Welch. Mrs. Benson.
I just wanted to add to that. Some three or four years ago, we had another situation like this, and maybe five, and I was very adamant, and I used the term, "We are no job savers for people." So if you're going to take another job, cut bait a fish. We can't save a job for you to go try out one and then come back. You either need to cut bait a fish.
That's right, ma'am. Absolutely.
This has happened before, and it didn't take place like that.
Did I see any other hands, if anyone just wanted to comment?
I don't know. It's the earth.
You can save--
We used to do it. It's crazy. It is. Do you have a motion and a second on the floor to deny the request for the leave of absence?
Yeah. I just asked Dr. Roget a question because I thought that we had a leave of absence for somebody at the last meeting that we approved, and so that's what I was--
There's another circumstance, and it's very different from this one. In some cases, people from the district take a one-year, kind of on loan position at RIDE, and that is a different set of circumstances. The department pays their salary and, you know, covers the cost, if you will, and we know it's a one-year deal, and we know it is something that ultimately benefits the district because someone comes back who's just done a year, say, of working with a lot of districts about evaluation or another item that we certainly can use, so we see it as a benefit to us. That's a different circumstance from someone going to another district or another job completely.
So I just wanted to make sure that we had that clarification, so that the committee understood that you didn't look back at a past agenda and just, and see that we had done that at the immediate meeting before this, so that we could make sure that also the audience would know the difference between the two. Yes, Mrs. Avanzado?
Very briefly, thank you very much for providing that clarification. I just wanted to say, for the record, this is absolutely nothing personal against Mrs. Arnold, and we appreciate her service to the district. This is just, in general, something that we don't do, or I don't do, and the rest of the committee doesn't either, apparently, so that's all. Thank you.
Mrs. Benson, and then we're gonna take the vote.
Dr. Roget, you are correct when you say we give a person a leave of absence to go for RIDE. I think we have one on the staff now that worked with RIDE last year, didn't we? One that we approved at a couple of meetings ago. She had--
She's there this year, working--
She's working here this year. That's what I'm referring to.
Yes.
And she worked with RIDE. And you're exactly right when you say go work with the Department of Education. It's nothing but a benefit to us, but to go and look at another job and then come back, that's a whole different circumstance. And I would like the vote to be cast with a roll call vote.
Lorraine, could we have a roll call vote, please?
This, this motion is to deny the leave of absence. Kimberly Page?
Yes.
Yes. Richard Welch?
Yes.
Linda Avanzado?
Yes.
Melvoid Benson?
Yes.
John Biscardin?
Yes.
Larry Cerisi?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
We have item number E. Do I have a motion?
I would like to add an amendment to that motion.
No, the motion is passed, so we've gone past the time to add an amendment to it. So we're moving on to item E.
I think we should clarify with her that if she doesn't take the job--
I'm gonna move on to item E, consideration of terminations.
What do you have wrong with clarifying to the person who has been rejected?
We have taken a vote on item D, and we have moved on to item E. So I'm asking, we have a consideration of terminations. Do I have a motion?
It's all move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Biscardin.
I'm looking here at the attachment, approval of terminations, non-certified staff, food service worker, and technology support assistant. Are either of these positions, are these both gonna be backfilled from outside, or are we gonna fill them internally with existing staff?
We will be, we will be filling both of these positions.
So there's no way we can cover with existing staff, or spreading out the duties for, the technology support assistant, for example?
No. You know, in some of these cases, you know, the issue is, well, I guess I can say this. I mean, we desperately need this work to be done, you know, and part of the problem right now that we're dealing with is that the work has not been getting done, or we've been using substitutes or that sort of thing. So, and that brings us to this point. So in doing this, we can effectively move to having someone who is well-trained and permanent in that position, which we desperately need in these two cases.
But as far as, in specifically the technology support assistant, we're making it effective August 1st, so we, so in effect, you've been without this person for almost seven weeks now?
Yes. We have been without the person for, and we've been, we've been basically using another person who is a, been a clerk from the high school, who knows that position well for technology and has been able to move over. That has led to a deficiency at the high school, where we're about to bring in a substitute. So, you know, it has, it has a trickle effect. Depending on the kinds of expertise needed for a particular position, you may have to do an involuntary transfer of someone within the district just because you know that person has the expertise, and deal with that for a while, but it's not the way we want to operate.
Dr. Roget, would you explain the termination of the food service position? Is that one of the contract employees?
It's basically a situation with Mrs. Benson where the person stopped coming to work.
Stopped coming to work?
Yes.
Was that one of our employees, other contractors' employees?
It's food service. We don't contract a food service.
Mr. Cerisi.
Wait a minute.
If we did, it wouldn't be on our agenda.
I need some more explanation. I don't see why we insert the order.
Yes, Mr. Cerisi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would ask, I would ask that maybe the Chair give advice, or maybe our legal counsel give advice to Mrs. Benson on this matter, as it was a matter that's been discussed in executive session, and it's an executive session matter, it's a personnel matter, it's an executive session issue.
Yeah, I'm--
A little bit--
We did not discuss this in executive session. This is not on--
This was not our agenda for executive session, so you might not, you might have had a personal question, but it wasn't a discussion.
Right. So, but my concern is, is that we're, you're going down a slippery slope here when you're talking about personnel in an open public meeting without first notifying them--
It's not, it's not job performance.
I know.
What we're doing is--
Let's not turn it into that, is what my concern is.
Well, exactly.
Right.
All right. So we have a motion on the table, Mr. Biscardin.
Wasn't leading to that. The question that I asked, if he was one of our employees--
Yes.
Other contract employees.
Yes.
Of ours.
One of ours. Mr. Biscardin.
Dr. Roget, did this person ever show up for work this year? Or has this been just, you know, they were--
Which one?
Oh, the food service, I'm sorry, food service. I'm sorry, food service.
No, sir, and there's been no contact.
Oh.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. Lorraine, could we take a roll call vote?
At this point?
Kimberly Page?
Yes.
Richard Welch?
Yes.
Is he here?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Linda Alvinzado?
Yes.
Mel Boyd Benson?
Um, one question before I vote, please. Um, you say you haven't gotten, haven't gotten...
It's a vote.
Steaming.
You need to vote yes or no, Mrs. Benson.
Discussion is over.
Go to the next one. Don Biscardin?
Know everything.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Benson?
Um...
Abstain.
Abstain.
Do you vote yes, no, or do you abstain, Mrs. Benson?
I don't believe in abstaining, so I have a question, and then I need to vote after that.
Right, well, this is at the time that we just voted yes or no, so I'm going to be asking you for yes or no.
You should go if you hadn't recognized us or said anything.
All right.
Should go, but everything is so restricted.
I'm going to move on. Mrs. Benson, I'm going to move on.
Move on.
The motion passes. All right, that takes...
No with the lack of information, Maureen.
Okay.
Okay, and I expect to read that in a minute.
All right, that brings us to CIP update on technology and ventilation. That's just your own technology stuff.
I just wanted to let the committee know that of the, before we broke for the summer, you had approved the use of CIP money to cover some projects in technology and what we had in terms of possibilities for ventilation at the high school. We have spent, are in the act of spending approximately $160,000 on technology, including a number of smart boards that were linked to some work that teachers have done through E2T2 for some time now. This has been something that we've been meaning to do for quite a while. We've also made a commitment in the last few years to a different method of science and math instruction that includes smart boards and student response clickers and equipment needed for that. And we made a move where more students are taking physical science in the ninth grade than waiting for that particular course as physics in the 11th grade, a curriculum move in science, and that required some equipment as well. And so those items are there. The ventilation issues, we continue to talk about in our facility subcommittee, and we have some ideas that we are exploring. And in the next session or two, I should be able to come back to you with some details about some, you know, some options that we have for having better ventilation on the third floor and the second floor of the high school, and what those options could possibly cost us. So I just wanted to use that as, as an informational item. Only there's nothing to vote on here. Just wanted to let you know where we were with that.
All right, thank you, Dr. Ojier. All right, the next item is item number G, the updated facilities, subcommittee's charge. Mr. Welch, this is something that you have asked for the charge to be updated. Could you comment on that?
The original charge that was done five or six years ago, as to the makeup of the committee, the committee really hasn't been operating under the, the way the charge was originally written. And so to try and bring it back in line with how the facilities committee has been made up as far as the different occupations that are represented that we need, and also includes the public works director as a member of the facilities committee for a couple of reasons. One is, the, as we found with the latest bond issue, the town wants to be the building committee, and that basically is the public works director. And as such, he needs to be involved right from the beginning when we start doing some of these projects, not only the ones that we have just bonded for, but any future projects, so that he understands the need and the considerations and studies that the facilities committee has conducted in order to come up with their recommendation to the school committee. The continuity from that point in getting the project done, once it's put before the public for bonding, to have it completed, is extremely important. And since he was not on the committee, and there was no exact representation for the town's side on the, on the committee, I thought, and we discussed it at facilities, that this was an important ingredient. Now, they also had a teacher in there originally, and they also had the special education director in there originally. Neither of those really made much sense. We added a principal, in this case, the principal from Davisville Middle School...
Wickford Middle School.
I'm, I'm sorry. You're right. Wickford Middle School, who has been our energy czar and is extremely knowledgeable on the operation of his school, which is something that we're going to be going forward with here, hopefully shortly, when I say shortly, within the bond, to replace the heating system over there, which is at the end of its useful life. It makes the, the committee better able to function all the way around, and that's why this has been brought up, to align the membership with exactly what the charge is, to make sure that we have the representative occupations on there, to be able to assist the school department. And the hope is that with the public works director involved in it, that a future projects for the town side might also be able to utilize the knowledge of these folks on facilities, as they have all sat there and indicated they have no wish to bid on any project in the town. They're taxpayers, and they want to just donate their time and their information, which they have to date done an excellent job, to the town. We all end up reaping the benefits of their combined knowledge and concern.
All right, I saw hands of Mrs. Alvinzado, then Mrs. Benson, and then Mr. Cerisi, so...
I'm going to hold my comment right now.
Okay. So Mrs. Benson and then Mr. Cerisi.
I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Cerisi, and then I'll make my comment.
Mr. Cerisi.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Welch, and also thanks to the membership of the subcommittee. I agree and support what you've put forward, one caveat here, I do think we should maintain as part of the membership, a, and maybe the language should read, a special education director or his or her designee. Maybe they have or have not attended meetings in the past, but I do want to leave the door open for them to potentially attend meetings and be part of the voting membership in the future for items that may come up, that may be special education or ADA specific. And so I would support this, this, this subcommittee change with just that one addition to the membership. If there are no objections, I will, will offer that as a motion to, to approve this with the addition of a, the membership, including special education director or his or her designee.
Second.
And again, I'm not, I'm not saying that it's necessarily, necessarily has been needed in the past or required. Again, I just want to leave that flexibility open to the special education office, in case we, we come upon an item that is special education specific or ADA compliance specific. I think their, their input on that would be valuable for the subcommittee.
Second. Mrs. Benson and then Mr. Biscardin.
Um, I'd like to agree. I'm glad I deferred to you, Mr. Cerisi. I'd like to agree with you that it will be need a special education teacher and a classroom teacher. And I hope that Mr. Welch would support me, since he's a builder. I know he never builds a house and remodels a kitchen without the wife having some input. And that is the role that the special education teacher will play, to use the special need population and the other role when it's not a specific special education need. So I'd like to see two more people added to the committee. I see the supervisor looking at me, and, no, the assistant superintendent who's responsible for teaching and learning. And I just think it won't be complete without, you got a principal, and you don't have the person who's in the kitchen, and you need a person to represent special education, because it may not be Wickford Middle School all the time. It could be another room. It could be a music room. And you just need to have a teacher involved. And I'd like to make a motion that we add those two to the...
Oh. Yes, Mrs. Benson, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion that we add those two...
Do we have a motion on the floor?
There's already one on the floor.
There's already a motion on the floor.
I'll, I'll wait and make an amendment to the motion, that those two be added.
If you're going to make amendment to the motion, you have to make it now.
Well, I'll make the amendment now, that we add a teacher, one specifically, a special ed instructor, and a general population teacher, and when that means K through eight.
I think that's how the committee is now. So it'd be very, basically, you would just vote against the, the motion that is on the floor.
No, I don't think they mentioned a special education teacher, not K through eight. You got a high school principal. It's all loaded with administrations. That's why I made the example of building a kitchen without the wife or the person who's going to use it, being, having some input. Am I correct, Mr. Welch? You're in that business. No man don't design no kitchen, or no restaurant, without the chef being there to at least say he wants a pan rack above the ceiling, not below the ceiling.
So we have a motion on the floor, Mr. Biscardin.
So I make an amendment to the motion.
Who has the amendment?
She just said amendment. But...
So I have an amendment on the floor.
Mrs. Benson made an amendment, but there's been no second to her amendment.
I don't hear any seconds, so right now...
I'll, I'll second her amendment, her amendment to the motion.
So, do we have an exact wording? That's, that's part of the reason that, these are in front of you, so people will put wording down for...
I have my own paper, and I have the wording. If it's that complicated, I'm sure I can straighten it out.
So what is your amendment? Lorraine, do you have Mrs. Benson's amendment?
Yes, an amendment that we add one special education teacher and a general population teacher K through eight.
I, I believe that, so we have a motion and a second. I believe that it's merely leaving the committee as it is now. Am I correct, Mr. Welch?
Not exactly, no.
No.
Oh, okay. Oh, because you, you were adding Mr....
He was adding the person from the town. Public works director.
Public works person.
Can I, can I just comment on, on all of this?
Yes, and then I'll get back to the hands.
The reason the teacher and the special ed director was considered to be removed, not because we were trying to remove their input, but because this committee has been involved for about six years, and neither of those folks have ever attended one of the meetings, except in the very first year. So, you know, what, in, by eliminating them from the charge does not stop them from coming to the meeting at any time, because they're public meetings. And what it does do is it doesn't force them to have another obligation to come and be present. They're always welcome, and so is their input. We're just trying to say, why, why make this a requirement for a teacher and a special ed director, especially if it doesn't involve their, their end? That's all.
Um, Mr. Welch, of all the people, I thought you would understand...
Okay, I'm going to recognize Mr. Biscardin, and then Mrs. Alvinzado.
Uh, Mr. Welch, I, I agree with you somewhat, and probably almost all the way. I, I, the, the addition of a special ed director, while it, on the surface, it, it sounds good, it looks good, but we have ADA laws that pretty much cover all that. So I, I think any reason to have the special director intimately involved is overruled by Americans with Disabilities Act. As long as we follow local and federal ADA requirements, we're good to go. So, yeah, Mr. Welch, I agree.
Okay, I saw Mrs. Alvinzado's hand, and then Mrs. Benson's.
Just a, a quick point regarding following the ADA, and that is, sometimes those regulations can be complex. Sometimes they can be questionable, depending upon what project we're working on. And I know in the past, we've had, you know, in the far distant past, we haven't followed them at times, and we've been fined for that. I think we should leave it open to have the director of special education. I support, or his or her designee, as I made the motion. I would definitely support, I support what Mr. Welch is saying and understand that, but I just think we need to leave the door open for the special education community to have a voice at the table. Thank you.
Mrs. Benson and Mr. Welch.
I didn't specifically say the director. I said a special education teacher. And even though it's a public meeting, sometime people are reluctant, and no one would know this better than you, Mr. Welch, to come to meetings and give suggestions that they feel that are going to be foul, because if she's in that classroom, and she's teaching those kids, and the committee could want to put green shades in there, and she would see the point where maybe white would be most soothing to the children. I didn't say director. I said a teacher, the person who's in the kitchen.
My motion is for the director.
All right, so, Mr. Welch, and then we'll have a...
Just let me clarify that. Everything that is done by the facilities committee is a recommendation to this committee. They do nothing without going through this committee, number one.
That we know.
Number two...
Mr. Welch is the floor.
Mm-hmm.
Number two, everything that happens in the school department has to be re-reviewed by RIDE before it goes forward. Number three, the level of expertise of, of registered and licensed people like engineers, et cetera, is always being required for the most mundane things. So the concern about this, while I appreciate it, okay, the effort was not to eliminate the input from these folks. The effort was to say, they have very busy schedules and lives as it is. If they're not attending now, what's, now you're going to, you're going to have it on there, and they're still not going to attend. Do as you please. I was just trying to alleviate it as a requirement, that's all.
I'm very much aware.
All right, Mrs....
Mrs. Page, he was addressing his comments to me. May I ask?
I think he was addressing it to everyone, not just you, Mrs. Benson.
Well, I would like to speak since I...
Motion to call the question.
Second.
All right, so we have a...
The vote on calling the question.
Um, no, not a motion to call the question. Mrs. Burgland, could you take a roll call vote for motion to call the question?
Richard Welch?
Yes.
Linda Alvinzado?
Yes.
Mel Boyd Benson?
No.
Don Biscardin?
I'm sorry, could you re...
This is to call the question.
Oh, yes.
Larry Cerisi?
Yes.
Kimberly Page?
Yes.
And then could you read the amendment to the motion back?
This is on Mrs. Benson's amendment that we add one special ed teacher and a general population teacher K through eight. Richard Welch?
No.
Linda Alvinzado?
No.
Mel Boyd Benson?
Yes.
John Biscardin?
No.
Larry Cerisi?
No.
Kimberly Page?
No.
Okay, motion fails.
Okay, now we're back to the main motion that Mrs. Alvinzado...
What's new?
Can you read that, Lorraine?
This was to approve the changes to the facilities subcommittee charge with the addition of memberships, including the special ed director or his or her designee. Linda Alvinzado?
Yes.
Mel Boyd Benson?
Yes. Didn't our motion include the...
John Biscardin?
No.
Larry Cerisi?
Yes.
Kimberly Page?
No.
Richard Welch?
No.
Motion fails three-three.
All right, so now we are back to Mr. Welch. Did you want to make a different motion on your original proposal?
No, I'm just, as far as I'm concerned, the, the proposal is the motion.
Right, right, because...
Accept his proposal as... Except his proposal as.
No, they denied it.
Mrs. Avanzado made a motion to accept Mr. Welch's proposal with the addition of a special ed director. So I need, you now need to put a motion on the table, say, to accept Mr. Welch's recommendation.
I make that motion.
Second.
All right. Lorraine, let's take a roll call vote. Melvoid Benson?
No.
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 It is a work meeting. I'll give you one minute, Mr. McGwin.
This was not on the facilities committee, um, discussed by the facilities committee on Thursday. It was pulled from the agenda. This was not decided by the facilities committee, uh, number one. It was on the agenda but pulled and, and when, uh, Mrs., Charlie Stam asked what it was about, it was only explained by Mrs. King that it was about the special ed director. Um, I agree with Mr. Cerise that I think that the special ed director, um, pupil and personnel services should be on because at the August meeting, when they were talking about an elevator at Quineset, the principal who happened to be principal of Quineset said, she didn't know that there was going to be an elevator, a hundred thousand dollars put in the school. She said, we don't need one. So that, uh, and I remember Mr. Cerise having an issue with a fence at Davis.
Your time is up, Mr. McGwin, thank you.
You know, this is important enough, you know, it says three minutes in the.
That'll be citizens' comments. Citizens' comments will be, um, we will give you three minutes if you'd like to come back up at that time.
Well, you know, taking a teacher is a problem as well.
The, the facilities subcommittee.
You wouldn't have the problems you have at Quineset.
The school committee has the right to determine the makeup of one of its subcommittees, not the subcommittee itself. So if the school committee wants to change the makeup of one of its subcommittees, it's here that it should be discussed and voted on, not as part of the subcommittee.
But it's my understanding that the subcommittee has, um, discussed this. Am I correct, Mr. Welch?
That's correct.
All right. So Mr. Welch has made a motion to approve the, um, the charge as he has written and I believe Mr. Baskarden seconded it. Let's take a roll call vote. John Baskarden?
Yes.
Melvoid Benson?
No, I need some clarifications. Didn't I understand to say that it wasn't on the minutes to be discussed at the meeting?
Kimberly Page?
Yes.
Richard Welch?
Yes.
Linda Avanzado?
No.
Motion fails three, three. All right.
No, because if Stam started the agreement, you can vote on it. It wasn't on the agenda.
All right. Yes, Mr. Cerise.
I will motion to, um, send this agenda item back to the facility subcommittee to discuss the, the topics that this school committee has brought forth this evening and their concerns and, and come back to the school committee with another recommendation because this recommendation has failed.
Yes, Mrs. Avanzado?
Just very quickly, I think involving and including the special education director is a larger point than whether or not they attend. It's a point of being inclusive of that community and we've had trouble with that in the past and that's the reason for, um, my motion on that. Okay, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
All right. Um, yes, Mrs. Benson?
Thank you, Mrs. Page. But I think the, I know because I have the latest ADA law that, that that is, that they.
Yes, Mr. Cerise, what is your, your motion, your point of order?
That, that is supposed to be in there, Mrs. Avanzado is correct.
Hold on, we have a point of order and then, and then I'll, I may get back to you, Mrs. Benson.
You just take your some nerve, Lorraine, before you get here.
No, you don't get on my nerves, but I just want, I need to listen to the point of order and then I can let you resume.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd ask that, the, the motion was very simple. It was to table the item and, and send it back to the subcommittee for reconsideration and that we receive, um, a new recommendation for the committee. Um, and I'd ask if we're going to engage on any discussion on that, just simply a motion to table. If we're going to have any additional discussion on that, can we please keep it to the motion on the floor so we can move forward with this? It's, again, this, you know, apparently it's going to come before us again, we're going to discuss it again. So, you know, procedure is, is the discussion should only be on the motion on the floor, which is to table this agenda item.
Okay, we've had the vote and we don't have a motion on the floor right now. I gave Mr. Cerise and Mrs. Avanzado one last comment, so I will give Mrs. Benson.
There's a motion.
Oh, there is a motion. Okay, I'm sorry, I, I didn't realize there was a motion.
Did we have a second on the motion?
Okay. So there is a motion to table this item and send it back to the subcommittee. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Mrs. Benson?
I have a question for the attorney.
Ask it, Mrs. Benson.
Okay. A subcommittee that's appointed by the governing body of a group, if they come in with things that are in fraction to the law, who's held responsible?
All a subcommittee does is it, it provides.
I understand their duty.
Subcommittee advises the committee. In this case, the facility subcommittee advises this committee. They don't tell you what to do, they don't tell you what not to do, they simply advise. This committee has the final say on what should happen and what shouldn't. Um, I think that what, right now, the only motion on the floor, however, is to table it. So that's the motion on the floor and that's what you should be discussing, whether you're going to table it or not. But a subcommittee only advises this committee, that's what they do.
Well, that would determine my vote because tabling it is a good idea, but you've got to know who's responsible.
This committee is ultimately responsible for what.
Thank you, that's all.
All right, is there any further, further discussion? If not, Lorraine, roll call vote. Larry Cerise?
Yes.
Kimberly Page? Richard Welch?
Yes.
Linda Avanzado?
Yes.
Melvoid Benson?
Yes, because it wasn't done properly at the meeting when Mr. Stam's asked for it to be.
All right, Mrs. Benson, just yes or no, please.
John Baskarden?
This is America, Miss Page.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, that brings us to the Doug Roth Memorial. This has been in unfinished business prior and now it comes to a vote for this committee. We've, um, had a petition in front of us of over 200 names asking us if a group funded not the school committee, but they self-funded a plaque by the flagpole at the football field if we were given that approval. I know in, um, past discussions, we had discussed if, um, we, um, had some sort of a, a plaque slash, um, naming of structures, uh, policy. And I did include in the packet a policy that had come before this committee. As you can see at the bottom, the, the, um, date on that was in 2009. So it's just something we hadn't moved forward with in the past. So that's a little bit later. So we can take this item still that's in front of us. And so I'd be looking for if we could have approval on, on this memorial. So I'll make the motion since, um, since I've been the person, um, to bring this forward from the committee.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Cerise?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know this is a very, um, personal and emotionally sensitive, um, topic. So I'm, um, very, um, sensitive and respectful to that matter. And I do apologize, I know the committee has had this on past agendas and has had this discussion on past agendas and I was not present at those meetings for those discussions. So, um, so I do apologize for that, not being a part of that discussion. I have several concerns. Um, I have no interest in, in, in voting no on this or attempting to block this in any way and I'm, and I'm not going to, um, vote on this, I'm going to abstain from this. And I just want to make my concerns known. Um, we've had requests come to us before for naming of, um, rooms and, and other things of that nature. After school, deceased school department employees who've worked for the school department for, you know, 30 years or so. And we've, we've, we've not taken up those items, um, either to, or, to vote for or against those items, um, for numerous reasons. So, you know, I, I kind of look at this when we have people working for the district, volunteering years of their, not volunteering, but working for the district for years of their lives and we don't take up those items. And then we kind of look to do namings or renaming's after elected officials to put a, a, a committee or any elected body in a position to name something after another elected official. I, I think it kind of becomes a slippery slope. I think we should kind of stick more to the discussions of, and topics of naming items or areas after school department, uh, employees rather than elected bodies having a discussion about naming something after another elected official. So I'm sure many, uh, disagree with me on that and, and, and that's fine, you know, we're all entitled to our opinions. Um, and I'm respectful of other people's opinions on this topic. And again, I know it's a very sensitive topic and I'm, I'm respectful of that. I just wanted to make my personal thoughts and opinions known on this topic. So therefore, like I said, I have, I have no interest in, in, um, trying to block this item and I, the committee is, um, well within their rights to take this item up and I just will not be voting on this item. So, thank you.
Mrs. Benson and Mr. Baskarden?
Um, I appreciate your insight on that, Mr. Cerise, because it was brought up concerning a person who had given more than 30 years and both of them was brought up in the same conversation. And then we go out and write rules and didn't include the two who were discussed at that meeting. And I have no intentions of blocking it because those things are very sensitive. And I just feel like to make the other gentleman come under an ex post facto law, I think I spoke with you about that. It's a bit unfair. So I'm not going to be voting. And I know Mr. Roth gave good time and he was a citizen of our community, but you just can't compare five or six years with 50 years of unpaid service helping the school department establish certain departments, then turning around and working as a referee in sports free of charge and after completing one career, went on to be a, shall I say, train officer, very successful. So I'm with you, Mr. Cerise. I glad, I'm glad you brought that point out. I will not be wishing the best of health and the committee that signed the petition, but I cannot participate in it in good faith and then have laws drawn up without the two being included in the same law. And that's the same thing I expressed to you, Madam Chair, because they were both brought up the same night. And to subject one to an ex post facto law and the other one to another one. But I'd like to suggest, if you can give the committee some suggestion, it would be nice to have a bench put on the football field or wherever you want it, baseball, and have a little plaque on it with this person's name on it rather than putting something permanently at the base. So that was just a suggestion.
Uh, Mr. Baskarden?
Uh, just, Mrs. Page, if you could clarify, um, do we have the dimensions of the plaque?
No, and if we followed the policy that we have in here, that would be something that, um, basically that would have to be worked out with the superintendent. Um, you know, so it would have to be, um, the, the, the committee would have to, um, not the school committee, but the group that came forward asking for the plaque would have to work in conjunction with the superintendent to make sure that he approves, um, what they would be proposing, um, so that everything would be, you know, what he would, um, do. It's, it's the same way, there is a, there is a plaque within this building that the school committee approved to the former secretary of the high school that is right outside here. So we have approved other things. Um, and, um, and I know what Mrs. Benson is talking about and again, the, the matter with Mr. Roth would follow the policy because it has been a year since Mr. Roth died and he did have outside people who came and asked the committee for this. We had 201 signatures. So it would not be, she's trying to insinuate that we're not following from one and the other and I'm saying this one would follow the policy that is proposed here. And the only thing that I would ask with the person who she is talking about is again, she followed the same policy.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not finished.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, do we, uh, have any idea what the plaque is going to read?
No, I, I don't know what that proposal would say.
And so we're not naming anything after. It's simply a plaque in the ground. So just to clarify, Mr. Cerise, we're not naming anything after anyone, it's just a memorial plaque being placed in the vicinity of the flagpole.
Mrs. Avanzado?
Uh, just a couple of quick things. I believe I said at the last meeting and I still, um, plan to support this, uh, would like to, and I believe you said, Mrs. Page, that the committee would see something. I don't know if you said the committee would or the superintendent would, when, when the plaque was finished and ready to, to go up if it's approved.
If the committee wants to see that they can, like I said, according to the, the proposed policy here, it's the superintendent who has to make the final approval of what that would say. But yes, we can have this committee bring, um, before the committee also.
The other point that I just wanted to make really briefly is that voting for this certainly doesn't, to me, take away anything, um, of the incredible amount of time and gifts that, um, Jim Baker and others have given to this community. And there's really no way to put into words how many years and the types of, um, things that he did for our community. However, I think that if we as a committee just decide, pick and choose this person, that person, that this is, this is a good person, that's not a good person to give an award to, that to me is not appropriate. If a group comes to us.
Right.
And particularly since, um, this group gathered signatures and this group isn't asking for something to be named, then, um, I feel that we are not putting ourselves in the position of picking and choosing and, and as I said previously, I'm, I'm going to support this.
Mr. Cerise and then Mrs. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just as Mrs. Avanzado said, um, I, I do disagree with her. Ultimately, this group is deciding, um, by taking the vote that they will take tonight. And again, I, you're absolutely correct in the comments that you have made and, and I, I disagree with, with Mrs. Benson. I don't, I don't believe that any policy has been circumvented or created after, after the fact. So I disagree with those comments and I, and I think the policy process has been followed and whatnot. My point of contention is, I'm just in disagreement with past, present or future elected bodies having discussions like this elected bodies have in right now on elected officials, whether they be past, present or future elected officials. I just don't think it's appropriate. I think it is appropriate to have discussions and naming after longtime school department employees, um, such as the one you had mentioned, the former, um, principal's secretary. And at that time, the former principal did bring that request to the committee, um, to name that, that room after, uh, his former deceased secretary. We had that discussion and we had a vote. Again, I, I, I'd like to reserve those types of discussions and, and votes for school department employees. I just, again, I just think, I just don't think it's a very good conversation to be having about past or present elected officials by a, in a past or present elected body. And I think you, you climb that slippery slope of, as Mrs. Avanzado said, and I know she's not suggesting this, but, you know, we're, we're going to do this for this person, we're not going to do this for that person. I, I just think the whole discussion is, is not appropriate. And again, I'm, I'm being sensitive to the topic itself and, and I know it is a very sensitive topic and, and, um, I'm going to be respectful of that.
Mrs. Benson?
Uh, the only thing that I would ask is that you work with the state VA and see if proper to place someone's name at a flagpole that haven't served or would. proper to place someone's name at a flagpole that haven't served or would, would be, is the requirement for service in the military or something that more far, let's say, today is a good example, someone who did something at nine eleven or something like that. So let's just make sure that we are obeying and doing the right things in respect to the flag.
So noted.
Okay.
All right. If there's no further discussion, Lorraine, let's take a roll call vote. Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Richard Welch.
I'm going to abstain.
Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
Melvoid Benson.
Abstain.
John Biscardin.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi.
Abstain.
Thank you. Motion passes three one two.
Motion pass what?
Three one two with two abstentions, three to one with two abstentions. All right, the next item we come to is the transportation audit.
I'm sorry, Ms. Burglum, I believe it was three abstentions.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was three abstentions.
Three yeses, no nos.
Correct.
There were no nos.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Biscardin.
Welcome.
So I'm looking over at Mrs. King, just because I know that we've had this on our agenda in the past, and I got the word that we weren't ready to move forward at this time.
That's right. We would like some more time. I will gather some of the work that has been done in the past and work with Mr. Horan, and we will bring something forward at a later date.
Yes, Mrs. Benson.
Mrs. King, would I be exact in stating that I like your recommendation because due to the various roadwork and the buses detours and so forth, and which will be going for a long time, I don't think we'd get a clear picture if we had it now.
That's a very good point. We'll keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Mr. Biscardin.
I just need a little bit of clarification. Earlier in the meeting, Dr. O'Jay said that we had the bus situation.
For Yorktown.
For Yorktown. So this is not about, this is different from Yorktown? This is a complete audit of the entire transportation system?
This would be, you know, it'll be whatever scope you actually want it to be, a school committee, would be much broader than, you know, neighborhood by neighborhood item. You know, typically, these kinds of audits are done either to find ways to save money and to increase efficiency.
Okay.
So, you know, and that would include, you know, if there are students who we think we need to find a way to get them on a bus, and, you know, there's a way to reroute what we currently have, you know, so it would look for options.
On the Yorktown issue, is it official? Have you announced what the changes are? Is that for tonight, or is that for another night?
Well, I don't have the specifics of the changes in my head. I know that Mr. Horan does, and he has started to notify people today. So it is going to happen.
So I guess next week?
He was very confident about it Friday, and today he notified me that he has a lot of the details in place, and he's looking to start this as soon as Thursday.
Oh, this week?
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
Mr. Welch and then Mrs. Benson.
You know, this transportation audit goes back to May a year ago, and it was to ascertain everything about our transportation department. Do we have enough buses? Do we have too many? Are the routes being run correctly, et cetera, by someone outside who has the expertise to do this? Mrs. King, I'd like to ask you a question. If this was tabled, do you think possibly we could have a recommendation by the next meeting?
A recommendation on how we would move forward? Is that what you're looking for with the RFP? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, so that we can take a vote on going forward.
Okay.
Do you think we could have that by next meeting?
Yep.
Can I make a motion that we table this until the next meeting?
One second.
Sir.
All right, Mrs. Benson.
Mrs. King, have you, we had a transportation committee that was very ample, put together with parents and expertise in the transportation system. I think we had a person named Miss Jill Johnan, Kathy Brown, and Mr. Walter Cattell, who is on the National Committee of School Bus Transportation. Have you seen that report?
No, ma'am, I haven't. I can look for that, though, in my data.
And Mrs. Benson, I believe that that was more on the, they did a separate transportation because they were looking at the reconfigure of elementary schools. So that was why they did their bus, when they were looking at the buses, it was specifically for reconfiguration. It was not, they weren't looking at high school, they weren't looking at middle school. It was only elementary school that that group was looking at with Mrs. Johnan and Mrs. Brown.
I respectfully disagree with you because Mr. Barry Matizian brought a lot of expertise and some laughed about bell time.
That was a different study.
And the sleek, they included all of that. So my only point, Mrs. Page, is to have her to look at that because the Yorktown situation with a better configuration of the bus schedule shouldn't have never happened. I drove through there three times to make sure.
We are talking about the transportation audit right now.
Yes, I'm telling you, this goes in with it.
Well, no, that's another item out of the agenda.
And get it in your head that you're not going to check me up, so don't make a mess out of yourself.
No, I'm just saying, Mrs. Benson, we will make sure that we get to talking about the Yorktown issue.
I'm here for the betterment of the community. And it should have never happened had someone made a drive-through. Those kids never should have been on Post Road. They could have walked one block down the hill.
All right, Mrs. Benson, you're off the topic. We have a motion on the floor on to table the transportation audit, and we will be getting to the Yorktown issue in a moment. But right now, we have a motion on the floor to table the transportation audit.
And I think I agree with it until they look at the report from the former committee.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor. Lorraine, could we take a roll call vote? Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Richard Welch.
Sorry, what was it? Yes.
Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
Melvoid Benson.
Yes.
John Biscardin.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
I have an amendment to the motion.
We've already voted, Mrs. Benson. It's Mr. Cerisi.
A quick comment on this. This is.
You didn't give a person a chance to make an amendment.
Mr. Cerisi has the floor, Mrs. Benson.
You're so set on closing people out and making a special.
Mrs. Benson, you had your time. If you wanted to make an amendment, you could have. Mr. Cerisi.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I don't know.
I certainly trust in Mrs. King. We'll definitely address this item and bring it back to the committee for a recommendation. But I really, this has been a pending agenda item that, it's been, I think, maybe over a year ago that maybe Mr. Welch had brought this forward. So I would.
You won the first committee when we voted up. You won the first committee, you remember, before Dr. Halliwell.
Did I finish? Mrs. Benson, can I finish, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
By all means.
So I would, you know, respectfully ask, and I certainly trust in the superintendent and Mrs. King to address this, and that we do get a recommendation on how to proceed with this one way or the other at our next meeting. I do want to move ahead with this, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to policies. We have, the first policy we have on our agenda tonight is the student athletics policy. The new athletic director here at the high school has asked us to make a change. It used to be that a student had to have a physical within twelve months of being, before they were in a sport, and the issue has come that many insurance policies will only pay for one per year. So the twelve-month window is actually a little bit too narrow because you can't have any twelve months of being in overlap, and this does not interfere with the Rhode Island interscholastically rules. And so the suggestion that came out of the policy committee was actually that we make it so that if a physical was within fifteen months, and what that would allow is you could have a student who could get a physical in May, June, before they went to summer camps, and it would still be good because your insurance only pays for one per year for the following athletic event. So that's what Mr. Hague has asked us to amend, and that is why the only thing you see within the policy is just the one changing from twelve months to fifteen months.
So one calendar year it won't get it done? Is that what you're saying?
It's not that it won't get it done, it's that many insurance policies will not cover if it's anything less than three hundred and sixty-five days. And so Mr. Hague has asked if we could actually make it by our policy that if the, if the physical was within fifteen months, that that would be fine to be accepting that. And it would, like I said, it would still follow the RI, Rhode Island interscholastic rules, so we're not circumventing any of that. It was just that prior, we had a twelve-month window, and he's saying that if we made it fifteen, we could still be basically within the same spirit, and then we wouldn't have the problem where people were running into where their insurance is saying, I'm going to charge you extra for the second physical.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yes, Mrs. Benson.
Did they take in effect the new rules that's coming out about football? I'm sure all of you have been reading about different injuries and so forth, and in Rhode Island's risk program, they spoke about in one of the papers that we get from our company.
Yes, and we do have the concussion testing.
Fifteen months with the new rules that's coming out about football. I think, and, you know, brain concussions, I think we're putting ourselves a little bit on the edge, a little bit on the edge. And also, I think parents should attend and be well explained because there are some things that have happened to a kid, and the parent thinking, well, the school's going to take care of it. It doesn't cut that if we're going to stay in the risk pool. And that was in the last newsletter from the risk pool. I'm sure all of you read it. And this about the helmets and so forth with football, that has been the talk, and the brain injury coming from football. So before we adopt anything, maybe he should come in and speak with you all, because that's a serious thing.
Yes, Mrs. Benson, if you remember, this committee was one of the, on the forefront of one of the first committees in Rhode Island that adopted the concussion testing. And we have all our athletes do that before they start the season, where they have to take the concussion testing. So if they have a test, if they have what is thought to be a concussion, then they can take a post-test to see if there is a difference. So we're still following that, we're still doing that. This policy won't change that. And if anything, parents have asked that the, that our policy be a little bit more than twelve months so that they were able to get the physical and not have to pay overcharge, so.
Ask them for committee members.
No, we're not going to do that. So, all right, so we have a motion on the floor in a second. Lorraine, could we take a roll call vote? Richard Welch.
Yes.
Linda Avanzato.
I think she stepped up for a moment.
Melvoid Benson.
No.
John Biscardin.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi. Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Motion passes four one. All right, the next policy, I know we've had it on our agenda before, but because it's been such a long time, it's actually here for a first read rather than a second read. I think technically, we could have taken this as a second read, but since it's been about three years since we've had this on, it's not for a vote tonight. Were there any questions? I know, Mr. Welch, you had made some changes to the plaque facilities policy, and I know that I'd also had some administration to make sure that we updated this policy. Was there any other discussion on the plaque policy?
Not for me.
All right, then we will put that on our next agenda for approval. That brings us to new business, and it brings us to discussion of bus transportation issues.
Sure. I just want to begin by saying, you know, as you know, we had a situation where we reduced our fleet by two buses. That meant ten-minute earlier time to start for the high school and ten minutes later for the other schools. It also meant that we had to do more to strictly enforce the limits that we have for kids walking to school, and that affected the Yorktown neighborhood. As I've already announced tonight, we've been able to, through some creative, you know, rerouting and actually looking at the actual number of kids who are taking the buses, the numbers that we have at the beginning of the year don't always flush out to the numbers that actually take place because some kids, even if they're within the distance, they'll get a ride from their parents, or they'll choose to walk on their own instead of take the bus. So after looking at how this is all shaking out, Mr. Horan has been able to reinstate bus service to the Yorktown neighborhood for Davisville Middle Schools. That's a good thing. In terms of the start times, it is something that Mr. Horan continues to look at. We're particularly concerned with the sewer work being done on Post Road and Camp Avenue, and this obviously will take place for the next couple of months. And once that is done, we'll get a better picture of our actual times for many of our buses. And if there are any options that we can take at that point, we will continue to look at this and see if we can, we can do something where we can get those times, even pushing back by five minutes would probably be helpful in the long term. So we're continuing to look at it. It's not done yet, but I do appreciate the patience that people have had. I appreciate the emails that I've gotten and the discussions I've had, particularly with some of the Yorktown parents who have certainly been a part of the solution with us. And so I think that part of it came out just the way it should, you know, people working together. And I want to commend Mr. Horan for not, you know, just letting this slide. He has been actively looking at options every day to see how things are shaking out and how many kids are in on each bus and what kinds of options he had. He told people he was doing that, and he actually was, and we have a solution. So, you know, in the long run, maybe we'll have more solutions to help more people with their busing needs.
Thank you, Dr. O'Jay. I see Mrs. Avanzato and then Mrs. Benson.
Just very briefly, I also want to thank Mr. Haran and also you two, Dr. O'Jay, as well as the parents that came in and sat at that meeting on the Yorktown issue. You know, it's truly, it's a shame that we can't, you know, replace or restore the cuts that we had made previously regarding the other buses that changed the start times, but frankly, that's just not an option. And I appreciate your willingness to look for wherever you can find efficiencies and try to save minutes and time for the students and the parents. And as I told a couple of the parents right out, and was very blunt with them, look, you know, this is so that we can try and retain as much of our educational system as possible because we're just chipping away, chipping away with the cuts. And I think better that we might have to have a ten-minute change in the start time than we cut even further in terms of some of our classes and other things that would directly impact their education. Not that everything, not that busing doesn't impact their education, it does, but again, we have, we have to make decisions. So I just wanted to thank Mr. Haran and Dr. O'Jay and those parents that were involved in helping us find some solution to it. Thank you.
Mrs. Benson.
Dr. O'Jay, in Mr. Horan looking at the situation that involves Camp Avenue, did he take a survey of the buildings and the businesses at Quonset, preferably Keefe Park, the number of residents in the area that have to exit that community? And the survey that I'm speaking about with the businesses in Keefe Park, how many of them start at eight? I had to go to a couple of meetings since they've been working, and at eight o'clock, it would be very, very crowded on going through the base with the people going to work. going to work and, and the way they have to do it. So it's jobs that we look at first because of many of those places over there, employees of our students and everything, so people have to get to work. But yet we have three heavily, heavily communities that have to give out, which is Cedarhurst, Mill Creek, and Wicklet Point. And those, thank you, that's quite all right, I'm just, let it be, it's not important to the committee. It's citizens be damned.
All right, if there's nothing else on bus transportation issues, that brings us to healthcare task force. Mr. Welch, this is something that you asked to have on the agenda.
Yeah, you have in front of you a pro forma, if you will, for having a, a task force put together to review our current health insurance program that we offer to all of our employees with the idea in mind of trying to look to see if there are ways that the, the coverage can be changed possibly and the, the associated premiums charged accordingly. This would include members of our contract employees, the way I've, I've pro-forma'd it, okay? Obviously, it's subject to the, the committees amending it, et cetera, but the idea was to include teachers, include non-certified, school committee, administrative controller, et cetera, to try and work together to see how, what changes could be made to lower the cost for health insurance here in North Kingston. Now.
I don't have one of you.
One of, one of the, the areas that, that most people are not aware of is that under state law here in Rhode Island, an employer of 500 or more people can do their own plan and that's by state law. That along with other issues should be, you know, presented to this task force with the task force reporting back to the school committee and make recommendations. But, you know, it needs to be a, a conversation with the employees' input and understanding as well as school administration and the school committee. It isn't a one-sided proposition. But any money's, premium dollars that can be saved obviously are an advantage to not only the taxpayers, but of course, on the co-share side, the employees themselves. I've also included in here the possibility of the town also being involved because anything that, that saves the town employees' money obviously is an advantage to them as well and the taxpayers as a whole. So it's, this was to start, to start a discussion. I did mention this a while back to a couple of the folks on the teacher side representing the union and they thought that this was a great idea because they feel as though, you know, everybody can join in, have some input and of course, if we're able to save money, all and more better for everyone.
All right, this is, remember, this is a non-voting item tonight, this is merely for discussion. I see Mrs. Avinzado and I see Mrs. Benson.
I just, yeah, I think this is an excellent idea and I know when we talked about this earlier, Dick, you said that at a couple of places where you had worked or you had been aware of these kinds of task forces that have, that had come together and come up with a couple of proposals for self-insurance pools and things that ended up saving a lot of money. And also maybe even, you know, also hopefully giving better plans to the employees for lower costs and that's obviously the goal. So I think this is a great idea. I mean, it's, it's our number one, probably our number one rapidly increasing cost and as long, as well as everybody else's and hopefully the town would agree to be a part of it and I think it would be good to have them a part of it as well.
Mrs. Benson.
I'd like to ask Mr. Welch a question. Are you, are we in the, the pool as I heard, I think at one time, the, escape my mind, you know, the one that if you have a lawsuit, you go to Marion?
The trust.
The trust. Are we in the trust health insurance?
I think we're in GHGRI, which is operated by the trust, isn't it?
It's the trust, GHGRI is no longer operational.
Okay, were you aware that the trusts that sent checks back to the school department are in the process that health insurance went down from two to four percent?
I don't know what you're talking about.
That they had a decrease and those who are in the trust, money will be reimbursed to the school. Am I correct, Mrs. King?
Actually, it's not a reimbursement situation, but what we did when it was budgeted, we had budgeted what was a higher percentage than what it actually came in at when we were given our actual final renewal. And the reason for that was because the trust went out to bid with WB Community Health, which is also another self insurer in Rhode Island, and they did a group bid and they were able to secure lower rates. So it's not that there's a rebate, it's just that the rates that were originally budgeted were lower than we thought and those were taken into account in our, our cuts or in revisit, and things we had to revisit for the budget.
Yeah, didn't we do that in around June?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I believe so, June, July.
It was July when they discussed it. Well, why I ask you about that, it seems to be, I don't know, and Mr. Welch, you brought it up, so maybe you at another meeting can make it much clearly, but if we're going to be in the trust, self-insured would be a very risky way unless the town, because we do so much with the trusts. And I don't see how you can operate any government entity without having the trust because it covers a multitude of things. And also you have to take into play that the new federal health law has come. So in doing that and continuing with the discussion, would you look at all of those?
It's, it's really not up for me to say, Mrs. Benson. The idea was to start the conversation and look to see what possible alternatives there would be that would work for our staff as well as the, the administration and the school committee.
I think the trust, Gibson, everyone.
What you're saying has a lot of merit as far as being self-insured and so forth, but, you know, it's one of those items on our budget that's a lot of money, yet we, what have we as a committee done to see if there was not a better way? So this is, in my mind, is, is a way to open that door and do some research and see if there is another way of skinning the cat and maybe saving some money while we're doing it.
Do you think that we can farm anything that could be in competition with the trust?
Well, I don't know, the trust might even end up being the manager of, of a, of a system that's different from what's, what we're buying right now. I mean, there's an awful lot to put on the table here.
It is, and I would ask you, when you put it on the table, bring back the fact of the new health law, because there are certain things that health insurances have been held responsible for now that they are not through the federal government.
Yeah, I think this is just a task force, so that, yes, the.
Why waste time without looking at all facets of it?
And I don't think anybody is disagreeing with you, but it is just a, a task force to be looking at where our options are.
And I was only offering a suggestion to him for the task force.
One of the things, Mr. Welch, that the only issue I had with it, that when you showed me the paper, I even circled was that you were saying two school committee members being on it and I was a little, I wasn't sure if, not that I had any problem with two people being on it, but it, it was just a sort of thing of, we're all one in a number of committees that I didn't know if we were spreading our self spin.
Well, it, my thought was that would be if, if the committee remained at seven. See, I'm not going to be here.
And I'm not going to be here and I'm just giving information.
Okay, Mr. Welch has the floor.
And if I'm, if I'm fortunate enough to be on town council, then I would certainly try and get the town to be involved in it and I would hope that, be on it. But, but the point really here is that you can't close the door on this, it's too big of a dollar item not to look at it and study it a little bit and, and see if there, there's not a way to save money for both sides, the employer and the employees. And, you know, since we haven't done anything with this, why not? And I don't know what the federal program is going to end up being when it's finally all said and done, that could all change with whoever is the president come November. So, I mean, it's worth taking a look.
Okay, I was just reminded of the fact that.
Mr. Biscardin has the floor.
I have, I want to ask Mr. Welch a question.
Okay, well, Mr. Biscardin has the floor and then you may have it again.
Mr. Welch, I, she's got to get you after me.
Okay.
I agree with the, you know, with the idea of the task force and any, I think you know me well enough by now, anytime we can save a penny, I'm all for it. I'm just wondering though, I'm not, not very familiar with task force 11, doesn't that seem a bit unwieldy?
Well, if the town doesn't jump in, you're only going to get nine.
Well, I was thinking, if, if they did, do we really need two talent, two school committee members? I mean, it's.
It was just a number to throw out there, I was trying to come up with an odd number.
Yeah, right.
And make sure that all the interested factions were represented in some fashion. You know, many times, like, let's take the school committee, if you had two members on school committee, both might not be able to make a particular meeting, but you still get coverage, so.
I follow you.
You know, it was just, just something, I'm not familiar with building a task force, I just think, you know. Me neither, John, I was just trying to think my way through this, you know.
I mean, we have, it seems we have difficult enough time getting seven people to agree, I'm thinking, I'm trying to get, seeing if we can 11 people.
Mrs. Benson.
It's not that I'm disagreeing, Mr. Biscardin, but I think we went through self-insurance once before, because when I was on the committee to negotiate the bus contractors and they're in a different circumstances, but it takes a lot of responsibility and a lot on the person's part. So all I would ask you, Mr. Welch, I won't be here and you say you won't be here, so that means that they'll have to, you'll have to incorporate in this before you leave, is that we be very sure that we'll be able to fund the health insurance without being connected with the trust. That's all I ask, okay? That we'll be able to have enough strength to go on our own without the trust. I think that's one of the biggest problems now in insurance companies, are being pushed down the river.
Right.
No one's going to go in office and change that health insurance.
Right. We can put this on our next agenda for a voting item. I, I do want to clarify that we aren't necessarily, this is just a task force, so we aren't necessarily going to be taking over our own insurance.
Just a suggestion for the task force.
Thank you. All right, we don't have any other reports, so that brings us to citizens comments and, so I'll remind everybody that these are citizens comments, the committee will not be answering back, these are for three minutes. When the alarm goes off, I will ask you to stop. The only person who I have signed up here is Pat.
Tocconi.
Tocconi, sorry. I'm sorry, I mispronounced your name.
Ms. Page, before we begin, I would like to correct you. I checked with the Ethics Commission and I checked with the state law. We, if we need to ask a question to make them clarify what they're saying, but no vote is taken on it.
I'm going to go by our policy, Mrs. Benson, and our policy is that we don't answer back, that this is a time for listening and so I'm going to be asking.
I didn't say answer back, I said if you need to get clarification.
But it's, this is a citizen's time, that they may comment and we will listen. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, you check with the Ethics Commission because I will let them know you denied, not that I would want the privilege.
You may talk to people afterwards, Mrs. Benson, if you have any further comment.
No, no, no.
Go ahead, Mrs. Benson.
Thank you. I'd like to address two issues tonight. The first one is, I'm very distressed because we still have no contract. I feel that most of the things that have been imposed on the members of the ESP because of no contract or unfair. A huge issue is the lack of healthcare for part-time employees. It could mean the difference between life and death, literally, for these people. The tremendous increase in costs for others means they could lose their homes. When the cost for teachers were not but increased gradually over the life of their contract, we, the lowest-paid employees, are expected to absorb the entire increase immediately. For me, this is of great concern. I beseech each of you to search your conscience and acknowledge that we are human beings with families to support, not just numbers on your spreadsheets. Please treat us fairly. It's time for both sides to stop the verbal bashing and childlike behavior. It only causes more anger. It is time to resolve our issues legally, peacefully, and with respect for each other. My second issue concerns a problem at Stony Lane. I did email Dr. O'Jay, he responded to me and I appreciate that and he is looking into the matter. I do want to bring it to your attention because you are the people who control the money and approve additional help. This is my email to Dr. O'Jay. Dear Dr. O'Jay, I am very concerned for the safety of the children at Stony Lane when they are on the playground before school starts. Truth of the reduction of the number of Paris at Stony Lane, we do not have adequate power coverage at this time. Mrs. Gibson and I will be outside with approximately 370 students. I feel that this is unreasonable to expect two adults to keep that many children safe. I'm sure you will agree that this is far from ideal, very dangerous, and not in the best interest of the children. As upset as I am about the ESP situation, I have to tell you that I am much more concerned about the safety of the children. I implore you to rethink the need at Stony Lane for additional Paris so that we can protect our students as we have done in the past. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. Dr. O'Jay is looking into it, I'm not reading this to you because a solution has not come our way yet, but just because I want you to realize that this is a really big safety issue and I personally, you know, I'm a basket case every morning when I go out there. If something happens to one of these children, it comes to me. I love children, I don't want to see any of them hurt and I'm sure that you don't want to see a child seriously injured and you certainly won't want any lawsuits. So if, if possible, I really, really implore you to get us some more help over there before something does happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to maybe, I have to give the teachers anything, cross the picket line.
So I had the first signups, so do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
The signup wasn't there when I came into the meeting. There was no opportunity.
I believe Mrs. Berkland just brought it up to me maybe 10 minutes ago, I mean.
I did not see a signup.
Well, you did suggest, you did make the suggestion he could speak in public comment.
And you did make a suggestion earlier.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Um, you have three minutes.
First of all, your current policy, BE, school committee meetings, policy statement says, "All business shall be conducted in a minute that complies with the stipulations of Robert's Rules of Order and policy stipulations." It was said at the last meeting that you don't follow Robert's Rules of Order. At this meeting, you limited me to one minute, it says, "Time of presentation will be three minutes." And in public attendance at school committee meetings, that was part of that, 9A Paragraph 6, it says, "Members of this committee and the superintendent may have the privilege of asking questions of any person who addresses the committee." That's your own policy on your website as of right now. So you denied Mrs. Benson something that she went to the Ethics Commission and said it wasn't your policy. That's not true. In response to the concerns of Quineset Elementary, roof leaks and air quality, the Commissioner of Education wrote me on May 25th, 2012, "We're working assiduously with the Department of Health to facilitate an effective Tools for Schools program." It is a EPA program that is done nationally, school-based committee or building team made up of administrators, teachers, maintenance staff, school nurses, and parents to investigate and then categorize and prioritize their findings. This would be very valuable as input to the Facilities Committee and the School Committee. I think that had this been in place, and the Commissioner of Education says she is putting this in place, I think that each school should have this and it would be great to have this as an input to the Facilities Committee and also the School Committee. I, I'll give you the, the letter from the Commissioner of Education if you'd like. I think it's positive to get, as Mrs. Benson said, if you want to design a kid. I think it's positive to get, as Mrs. Benson said, if you want to design a kitchen, you ask the cook, whoever that may be. Sometimes it's the husband, sometimes it's the wife, but, and as far as the Facilities Committee goes, it was not discussed, it was on the agenda and it was pulled last Friday, the composition of the committee. But a principal should be there, that follows the, the tenants of Tools for Schools, a teacher selected by the NEAK, and, you know, this needs to be done. You had a principal at the August meeting say, when she found out there was a $100,000 elevator for her school, nobody told me they were putting an elevator in our school. We don't need that. I support Mr. Cerise's request, particularly for the Director of Pupil Personnel Services or designee to be on that.
Thank you, Mr. McGwin.
Because there's other issues that aren't just covered by 88. Thank you.
Are we going on the motion?
Yes.
Yes, we voted on the motion to adjourn, so the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Congratulations on your position.